Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening and welcome to the May 13, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Time is posted at 6:00 PM for the meeting to begin. The board hopefully will be going into non-public for approximately one hour, and the regular business meeting will resume at 7:00 PM for those watching at home. I'll wait and introduce the board at that time. I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32A, B, and D.
So moved.
Second.
So motion, the second. Any discussion seen on Madam Clerk.
Sleckman, Chartrand.
Aye.
Sleckwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Sleckwoman Blanger.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Board will be moving into non-public.
For this week's report. Community honors Exeter's Black Revolutionary War community. Seacoast Artists Association hosts its annual members showcase. The Select Board discusses a single-use plastics ordinance. And a reminder about this weekend's Ale Wife Festival. For Exeter TV, I'm Will Tapley, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Residents and community leaders came together this past weekend to unveil a historic marker as a part of the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire, honoring Exeter's Black Revolutionary War community. We attended the ceremony to mark the occasion.
I'd like to introduce Nico, and he's going to open up the ceremony.
As a history major, going back to that Zoom meeting four years ago, I was embarrassed of what I didn't know about the town that I lived in. And what really excites me is that, in addition to recognizing and honoring these brave Black men that fought in the Revolutionary War and set up in Exeter, we can use this as a way to educate not only ourselves and this generation, but generations to come. I am so excited that this is here, in this location, that people can walk by and see this and recognize and honor and learn about this amazing, beautiful community that we live in.
So this history is more than just unveiling the marker. This site will be a site for conversation, how these stories impact us today, how the past brings us to now, and how we can, once we know the story, create, like what we want to do in this state, a group of people that creates systemic changes and honor this history towards a more just and equal society.
Oh, freedom! Oh, freedom!
Drum roll.
I'd like to say a couple of things before I read the citation. My family and my husband, Russell, who's dean at Phillips Exeter, we have been embraced by Exeter. When we came 37 years ago, we were like, hmm, can we do this as a family? And the first group that embraced me was the Legal Women Voters. They loved us. And then there was Hope, the librarian, when we were actually in the location of the Historical Society's present home. Our church, Christ Church, embraced us. And the many families at the academy, and I see Pegaronia, who brought us our first Christmas gift to our kids. I will never forget. And for all who have embraced me when we tried to get the Martin Luther King Day holiday, we were the first town in the state to say yes, we want the Martin Luther King Day. So I am so proud and so, I've been so honored to represent you the six years that I was in the house. And now it's time to hear what history is thankful for.
Full coverage of the ceremony will be available on our YouTube channel soon. The second-floor art gallery in Town Hall is once again full of beautiful works. Gabe Perez has more information on the current exhibition put on by the Seacoast Artists Association.
Returning for its second annual All-Members Spring Exhibit, the Seacoast Artists Association invites everybody for the weeks of May 4th to 5th, 11th to 12th, and 18th to 19th, from noon to 4:00 PM, to come to the Exeter Town Hall upstairs gallery, where all members of the SAA will be celebrated by having their work placed all around the gallery. An opening reception will happen tonight, May 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, for the exhibit titled "Primavera: The Art of Spring", which will benefit the scholarship fund, giving scholarships to local students around the Seacoast area. Visit the gallery these next few weekends and celebrate the SAA's impact on both artists and students, and breathe in a little bit of that art air. For more information about the SAA or upcoming events such as these, you can visit their website at seacoastartists.org.
The Select Board met on Monday, May 6, to consider several agenda items, including a discussion on the implementation of the town's single-use plastics ordinance. Here's a quick recap from our Meeting Minute series. Welcome to your Meeting Minute for the Exeter Select Board's April 29 meeting. Justin Pyzon was sworn in as the new Fire Chief of Exeter.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Town Conservation and Sustainability Planner Kristin Murphy gave an update on the status of the single-use plastics ordinance that was passed by voters in 2022.
You know, if we have a holiday event here in the Town Office Building, those events now, instead of having plastic soda bottles, plastic bottles of water, we have switched to aluminum-canned sodas, and then we rely on the fountain and cups. Parks and Rec did an incredible job. They've installed water bottle refill stations at a variety of town parks, and that includes Townhouse Common, Brickyard Park, and the Rec Park. And Parks and Rec also provided reusable water bottles to the kids in the Rec Camp Program.
I appreciate your diligence, Kristin. This is not an easy thing to implement, and you've made some progress. And with the help of Sustainability Advisory, the folks on there who are very committed to this, we are going to, we are going to get there.
Hello, my name is Corinne Ziegmont, and over the past few weeks, I have been learning about severe weather. Since 1907, plastic has been used for many things: utensils, cups, packaging, toys, etc. These are just a few examples of why we use plastic. But as useful as plastic is, the factories that produce it are releasing greenhouse gases. That creates global warming, which raises the percentage of bad weather.
Rad Nichols, Executive Director of Coast, presented a funding request to the board. Coast is a nonprofit regional public transportation service that assists residents in and around Exeter, as well as the Seacoast.
Anyone who is a citizen of this town can use this service, correct?
Yes.
So we switched to, like, seniors. But the fact is, is your town is subsidizing this service, and if you need a ride somewhere, it's available.
I don't know how to put a value to five or 10 people using it and how much, you know. So I would, I hope we can get the ridership up. But I do find it to be a valuable resource for people in town.
To watch the full meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. The next Select Board is slated for May 13. See you there. And finally, the River Herring are currently making their way upriver to Spahn, just in time for this weekend's Ale Wife Festival. Here's a preview of the event.
This is a reminder that the Exeter Ale Wife Festival returned this year at Founder's Park on May 11. Come on down to become involved in the many creative and fun booths and outlets within the event, including the ability to touch ale wife taken directly from the river as they make their way upstream. So remember, Founder's Park on May 11. Bring your kids, your dog, or whoever else, and celebrate the migration, one fish at a time. To learn more information, you can visit the town website at exeternh.gov.
That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word. And head over to the town website and subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other town news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on May 24th for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Will Tapley, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a good weekend, Exeter.
This is your reminder for the Exeter Ale Wife Festival. What day is it? Saturday! What day is it? Saturday! In Founder's Park! We got fish, and fish, and other things too, like boots, and you can touch a fish!
You can touch a fish! You can touch a fish! You can touch a fish!
The Ale Wife Festival is back, baby!
The Ale Wife Festival is back, baby! Yeah!
May 11, at Founder's Park. Go to the Ale Wife Festival. You can touch a fish!
Touch a fish, touch a fish!
Disclaimer: Your ability to touch a fish is completely dependent on whether or not there are fish present to touch. Sometimes there's no fish in the water, and therefore it is impossible to catch them and touch them if they're not there. That would be like trying to cook pasta, but you have nothing in the cabinet. You cannot sue the Town of Exeter if there's no fish present on the day of the festival.
There are rules and regulations regarding the way we're able to build Town of Exeter. There are rules.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter. Welcome to the May 13, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The Board called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM and went into non-public for an hour, and we're now ready to start our regular business meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM. I'd like to wish everybody a good evening, colleagues on the Board, respective town staff, certainly those in attendance and watching from home. I'd like to introduce the Board. To my right, Selectman Dan Shartrane, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
We also have our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy. Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening.
Good evening.
And my name is Nico Papakosndis. We'll start with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with comment. We do ask if your comment is relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait for it to come up at that time. So I will pause and invite anybody out for public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. Catherine Edison from 12 Conne Road in Exeter. Here about the Pickpocket Dam. I have a brief comment. I request that the Select Board formally revisit the decision vote on October 2, 2023, to move forward with the submission of the NOAA Restoring Fish Passage Through Barrier Removal Grant application, which was submitted on October 16, 2023, in light of information that was either not available or not presented to the Board at the time that the decision was made. The information questions the underlying premise and key facts upon which the application rests. Exeter now has a pending grant application for funds to remove a dam for the sole purpose of improving ALWIF fish passage, in spite of the fact that state data and scientific summaries conclude that there are few to no ALWIF even reaching the dam for the past eight years following the removal of the Great Dam, which greatly increased fish passage downtown and was expected to allow many more fish to travel upriver. When the Exeter River Advisory Committee presented their case for this grant application to the Select Board and requested their approval to submit it, key elements were missing from that presentation, which should have factored into the Board's decision. As a result of this missing and incomplete information, the Town of Exeter, on behalf of its citizens, submitted a grant application that can now be seen as factually false, in several of its key arguments. These flaws speak to the core statements of the need for funding and the decision-making process upon which the application rests. These issues would seem to render the application false and invalid. I and others in the community feel that failure to acknowledge these issues and take action to correct them immediately has the potential to result in $2 million of federal resources being awarded based on an application now known to have false information and exaggeration in its argument. Immediate action is needed to correct the grant, as decisions on funding are expected by July 2024. I ask that the Select Board either withdraw their application or amend the information provided in the grant to NOAA to avoid unfairly misleading the grantor. The issues arose from a highly rushed process conducted in about two weeks, based on an incomplete feasibility study, which willfully bypassed the public process. If the application is withdrawn or amended to reflect the facts, this will give NOAA transparency, allow time for all stakeholders and abutters to participate and make an informed decision, and will also provide time to investigate the true underlying issue with upriver fish passage in the Exeter River. We need to understand the true reason behind little to no ALWIF fish passage before any grant is made or any decisions or actions regarding the dam are taken. Thank you.
Thank you. We received an email, the Town Manager's Office received an email from you on May 3, and that is included in our Select Board packet under correspondence this evening. I had prepared a statement that I was going to read in response to that, but since you're here now, I won't wait for correspondence, and I'll just read my statement.
Okay.
Regarding Pickpocket Dam, on Friday, May 3, 2024, an email was received by Town Senior Executive Assistant Pam McElroy from an Exeter citizen requesting that, quote, "The Select Board formally revisit the decision vote on 10/23 to move forward with the submission of..." of the NOAA Restoring Fish Passage Through Barrier Removal Grant application, which was submitted 10/16/23, in light of information that was either not available and/or presented to the Board at the time that this decision was made," end quote. The entire email, as I stated, is part of the Select Board package this evening. VHB, the Town's consultant, has reviewed the email in its entirety and has written a response, which will be posted to the Town's website. In its response, VHB disagrees that key information was missing from the decision process at the time the Select Board voted to apply for the NOAA grant application. Although the feasibility study was not yet complete, the primary conclusions and basis for the grant application have not changed. As discussed in depth in that grant application, improving ALWIF fish passage is not the only reason that led to the Town's decision to submit a grant application to NOAA. The NOAA grant application and the feasibility study discuss multiple environmental resilience and public safety benefits associated with dam removal, including the following goals: advance restoration efforts for, and I'm going to pronounce this wrong, probably diadromous fish populations by eliminating a barrier to upstream fish passage; improve the Exeter River's declining water quality and strengthen the Exeter River's natural ecosystem; increase the Exeter River's flood resilience and reduce vulnerability to the growing risk of fluvial flooding; and to increase public safety by eliminating unsafe dam infrastructure. While the Select Board has voted to apply for the NOAA grant, the Select Board must make a final vote to adopt a preferred alternative so that the Town may come into compliance with NHDES's letter of deficiency. The Town has received feedback and opinions from residents from both Exeter and Brentwood regarding the Pickpocket Dam and the possible alternatives. All public comments, whether oral or written, have been compiled, responded to, and the final feasibility study dated April 30, 2024, which is available on the Town's website. In making a decision on which alternative is preferred, the Select Board will review all public comments and respective responses and take them into consideration. Thank you. Joanna, I can give you a copy of that, too, if you need that later. Any other public comment this evening? See if there's anybody on Zoom. Okay, see no hands up in Zoom and nobody else at the podium. We can close public comment. And we'll move on to proclamations and recognitions. We have several this evening. I can take the first one. I'd like to announce that it is our pleasure to congratulate Desiree Murphy, Water Sewer Utilities Clerk, who has been awarded the Employee of the 2024 Public Works Winter Quarter. I'd like to read what some of the folks in Public Works who nominated Desiree said. Desiree is courteous and thorough when helping residents with their water sewer bills. Every month, she sends out high-usage letters to inform residents that their usage is above average, so they can identify water leaks sooner rather than later to avoid a costly bill. Desiree has no problem helping cover the front office beyond her normal schedule when needed without hesitation. Desiree also schedules meter readings while the part-time clerk is here, so she can properly perform meter readings safely and efficiently. Desiree also helps the water meter technician schedule and prepare for backflow device testing. So on behalf of the Select Board, congratulations, Desiree. And I wanted to add that the Employee of the Quarter was created for the Public Works about 25 years ago, and it's always very exciting when we get to recognize those folks who work so hard. So, congratulations, Desiree. It's in our packet, but if this can show up on TV, probably not. It's Desiree's reward. Segueing to a proclamation also for Public Works is the National Public Works Week of 2024. On behalf of the American Public Works Association and the Exeter Public Works Department, our Public Works Director, Steve Cronin, has requested that the Town officially recognize National Public Works Week, which is May 19 through the 25th of 2024.
Shall I read?
Please.
Okay. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 19 through 25, 2024, Advancing Quality of Life for All. Whereas, Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Exeter. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leader, and children in Exeter to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association/Canadian Public Works Association, be it now resolved, we, the Select Board of Exeter, do hereby designate the week, May 19 through 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In witness thereof, we have, we hereon to set the seal of the Town of Exeter on 13th May, on the 13th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have one more proclamation this evening, and that is for Municipal Clerks Week, which was May 5 through May 10 of 2024, which was last week. Nonetheless, we're going to read it tonight.
Okay, Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas, the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas, it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. And now, therefore, we, the Select Board of Exeter, do recognize the week of May 6 to May 10, 2024, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk, Andrea Kohler, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Dated this, where is it, 13th day of May, 2024.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And this is not a formal proclamation, and I was going to talk about this during committee reports, but I'd like to just take a moment to recognize the Tree Committee, a recent achievement from Tree City USA. With the dedication of the Tree Committee volunteers and with collaboration between Public Works and Parks and Rec, the Town of Exeter was recognized once again by Tree City USA, receiving our fifth-year Tree City USA title and our third consecutive growth award for going above and beyond Tree City requirements. So, it's a pleasure to be the Select Board of Exeter Committee. They've worked awfully hard, and they deserve this recognition. So, thank you for indulging me.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Did you want to do the AARP?
Sure.
Yeah. Pass it down.
Thank you. So, we recently received this. This is to certify that the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, has committed to becoming more age-friendly under the criteria established by AARP, and has been accepted as a member of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities. And this certificate is valid through May 18, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
And we will find a home for that nearby.
The planning work is not going unnoticed.
Okay. Next, I would ask the Board to take up approval of our regular meeting minutes from April 29, 2024. Were there any amendments or revisions to the minutes?
I had none.
None? Okay.
I need to remember if I was here.
Yes, you were.
Yes, you were. Next slide. Seeing no amendments or revisions, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter regular meeting minutes of, Town of Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of April 29, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. There are no appointments or resignations to consider this evening, so we can jump into our discussion items. And we have our Town Engineer, Mr. Paul Velasic, with us for an update on the siphons. Good evening, sir.
Hello, Paul Velasic, the Town Engineer. And at your last meeting, we had the Public Works Director, Steve Cronin, give an update. And the update talked about an exploratory probe, and whatever information we gather from that probe would help in deciding what our next steps were going to be. Well, that probe has been completed, and the idea of that probe was to drill from the Swayze Parkway side of the river, heading towards the mills, with a bit, instead of going down into the bedrock ledge that we knew was there, stay above that, closer to the original design elevation of the siphon, and see if we could get across the river that way. And there was a little bit of hope that we could make it all the way across, but we already knew that there was a ledge outcropping that we originally hit and continue to hit every time we drill, about 200 feet from the bank of the Mill Street side of the river. So, after a couple paddle changes to get the right bit, the contractor was able to make it mostly across the river until of that known ledge outcropping. They backed out a little bit, tried to steer around it, tried to steer above it some more, was still staying within our regulatory requirements for cover on the pipe, weren't able to get over the ledge. But what they did is they confirmed that there is no other ledge outcroppings from the one we discovered on week number two of the project, all the way over to Swayze Parkway. So, with that new information, there is a new game plan. And the game plan is going to start with a rock drill over on the mill side of the river. And they're going to drill down to that ledge knob that we already know there, and they're going to attempt to drill through that. Only the distance of the ledge, when they get to the other material, they're going to stop, pull out, enlarge that pilot hole that is six inches to 12 inches. When they get through that ledge knob, again, they're going to pull out, and then they're going to put on the paddle bit, go through the 12-inch hole in the ledge, go all the way over to the Swayze Parkway side of the river. And then, now we'll have connections on both sides of the river, which is real important, because after that, we'll put on the 18-inch reamer, bring it across the river, and enlarge the hole in the ledge knob to 18 inches, and after that, pull the siphon pipe through. So that is the current game plan. In the look ahead, as far as schedules go, probably about midweek, we'll be starting that work. And we anticipate by the end of next week, that either the paddle would be coming across towards the Swayze Parkway or has made it across already. So that is the general game plan.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Velasic?
Just noise. Is this new drilling attempt going to be even louder than what it's been for the people at the mill?
The, it'll probably be louder for the mills. It'll probably be less louder over at the Housing Authority side. And the reason that I say that is because you got the reclaim machine, that's the big machine that sits right on the road, on Swayze Park, the roadway. That's the reclamer, and what that does, it takes some of that drilling mud, and then takes out the little grinding bits, and refreshes it and reuse it to continue on with the drill. That is too big to take over to the other side of the river. So the contractor is having a smaller reclamer delivered, I think it was down Alabama or something, and it should be arriving within the next couple of days for that work. In preparation of that reclaim machine, if you're over at the mill side of the river and you look, you'll see a lot of crushed stone that was put down as a pad to hold the reclamer. So, it's going to be, the reclaim is going to be operational during the drilling operation. It is not the same reclaim machine, but where there wasn't the reclamer over there for quite a while now, there will be one.
Thank you.
And have we notified our abutting residents, to the best of your knowledge, of the potential for increased noise?
Yes. I think tomorrow is it, a meeting with the Exeter Housing Authority, and I've reached out to their property manager, the person who's been going to our project meetings, and offered that if they would like to have a face-to-face meeting with the Exeter folks and engineer contractor, we can make that happen.
Okay. And if I can do anything to help with those meetings, please let me know.
Very good.
Always happy to do that. Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have our Town Planner, Dave Sharples, who's here this evening to give us an update and ask for some authorization on the owner's project manager, and this is with respect to the new public safety complex. I'd like to just say that I've had the pleasure of sitting in on a lot of these meetings, most recently the one on Friday, where I heard all the department heads working on this go through the RFPs and really vet the five RFPs that they received incredibly carefully. And it was just a great experience to go through that. So with that, Dave, I'll let you give the Board an update.
Great, thank you. As the Chair mentioned, I'm here to, tonight, I'm here to request that the Select Board consider a motion to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate and execute a contract with CHA, who is one of the firms that responded to our request for proposal for owner-project manager. But just for sake of the Board, maybe refresh, those that are watching, what is an owner-project manager? We, as you know, the vote was successful in March to build a new police station, fire substation at 6 Continental Drive. The budget was $17,522,000. The budget was $17,522,500. And we started meeting at the, with the helm of the town manager, we started meeting right away. There were eight, nine of us, including the chair, that we met pretty much every week, once, I think, a couple times, maybe even twice a week, to kind of get this project started and get it on track. And there's a bunch of different delivery methods, but the most municipalities are, us too, used to do like a design bid build, and I think I may have come here and explained that before, but it's like you have an architect go design a complete, you know, everything. They design everything. Whoever building it's not involved at that time, and then you go out to bid and you kind of, especially in this market, you pray that you're going to get bids that are somewhat relevant to your budget. That has not been happening in this market lately, particularly since COVID, with the escalation of site and building construction just going through the roof. So we decided to go with a different delivery method, which I'm not going to get, you know, into it, but it's more of a construction manager at risk type delivery method where the design team, the architect doesn't just build, you know, design it in a vacuum. We get the designer on board, we get who's going to build it on board, and they work together. They identify any procurement issues that may have with certain equipment, because right now, long lead times for certain equipment, like switch gears and transformers and stuff, are still, you know, 12 to 18 months, so we want to identify those early on the project and keep this project on budget and on schedule. So to do that, we, our group recommended that we hire an owner project manager. An owner project manager, or OPM, which I'll refer to them, as are not required on all projects, a lot of small projects can be handled internally by town staff. This is a large project for Exeter, it is a critical facility. It's a 24/7 police station with a fire substation, so we thought an owner's project manager would help us in this process. And what they do is they will, right away, they're going to start helping us with selection of the design team, selection of the construction manager, making sure we get a good team on board that communicates with each other. And their biggest thing is to oversee the project to make sure it stays on schedule and on budget. Time is money, they're going, and within the budget. So throughout the project, they're going to continually do several cost estimating, stop, cost estimate, make sure we're on track with the budget, and make sure everyone's coordinating, the design team, the construction manager, and the, you know, the MEP engineers, and, you know, they're all working together and they're getting everything done on a timely basis, because if we move this project along, it's just going to save us, you know, time and money in the project. So we believe, we believe in an OPM for this project, so we issued the RFP that was enclosed on April 12. As the chair said, we received five responses, and we conducted interviews, and the team was, who did the conduct, who was on the interview panel was the town manager, the assistant town manager, the police chief, the deputy police chief, the fire chief, the building inspector, the finance director, and myself. So we all sat down, we interviewed all five firms that submitted. We were in a really good spot because all, we felt all five firms were capable of doing the job, and we couldn't really make a bad decision. It was, they were very, you know, they came off very well, very experienced, had a lot of experience. So, and we asked them for fee proposals. The fee proposals were ranged from, well, four of them were from 361, we had a 361, a 370, a 374, and a 397,000, all within about 40,000. We had an outlier that was like 632,000. But with professional services, you kind of go based on qualifications, because it's difficult to compare apples to apples when, you know, someone's 360 and someone's 370. It's not necessarily apples to apples because it's level of effort and so forth, and that's right in our purchasing policy. So after review of both, but we take it into consideration, it's one of the considerations. After consideration of all the five firms, we are proposing that the town engage the services of CHA consultant for a fixed fee cost of 3,700, no, 3,74,724 dollars. Joe Sullivan is going to be the lead on it. They are a company, they have multiple people, there's Joe Sullivan, there's, you know, Rob, and Dave are going to be, you know, part of, we're have like a team, but Joe Sullivan is the lead, and he's done numerous police and fire stations in New England, so he has a lot of experience. We're very excited to work with him. He wanted to be here tonight, he had a conflict of another select board at like six, so I told him not to worry about it, you know, he will come to a few, yeah, he'll come to a future, future select board meeting, and he'll just keep us informed, and we'll keep the board updated throughout the process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Sharple?
Just who would they be reporting to? Would you stay in?
Thank you. Yes, ultimately, they would report to me, but again, we have a team engaged in the process, so that team would stay involved.
And who's on that?
The two chiefs, the assistant town manager, the town planner.
So it's going to stay the same, the static?
We'll stay together throughout the project.
Or building inspector.
Yes.
Thank you.
It'll stay. And I think, Joe, we were talking, I think we talked about that collectively, and I guess it depends on the issue. You know, if it's a small issue that maybe, you know, Doug, the building inspector, could handle, you know, I mean, we, but everything ultimately, you know, the bigger major items will all go through Russ and then get, you know.
Dispersed. So if Doug has a meeting with them, it would go to Russ, so he's up to date, and then he would make sure everyone else.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
That's it for me.
Anybody else? Down here?
I just want to thank the town planner for availing himself of the expertise we have on the facilities committee. I witnessed a couple of great conversations that you had with our building professionals on that committee, and that was great use of volunteer resources, so talking about the process of how to get this facility built. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, because I want to thank them too, because they were invaluable throughout this process, and even Mark Leighton came to our final meeting last Friday to give some more invaluable advice that we'll utilize for the future, so.
Yeah, it's an impressive lineup on that committee.
Yes, they all have the experience.
You have a former facilities person at the Exeter Hospital, you have the current facilities person at Phillips Exeter, a past facilities person at Phillips Exeter, and one other.
An architect.
An architect.
And an architect, so yes, we're well, we got a good team there.
Great group of volunteers. Thank you for availing yourself of them.
Thank you.
Selectman Chartran, thank you for bringing that up, because Mark Leighton did volunteer his time last Friday and was, I thought, a vital part of the conversation. He was able to answer questions, but more importantly, was familiar with some of the firms that we had interviewed and actually knew some of the individuals, and he was able to explain how it works and so forth. So thanks for bringing that up, and we appreciate Mark taking time out of his day to come meeting. There are no other questions, and I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract with CHA consultants for the scope of work set forth in the requisite for proposals for owner project manager services, Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, Town of Exeter Police Station and Fire Substation dated April 12, 2024, for.
A price?
Not to exceed.
For not to exceed a price of $374,724.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a peace resolution that was presented to the select board by a group of citizens, and I think we have some folks here this evening, and I think you wanted to lead off with a presentation?
I would too.
Thank you. Right up to the microphone, and if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Karishma Manzoor, and I live at 6 Windermere Lane in Exeter.
Thank you.
Chair, did you want us to?
Louder.
Chair, did you want us to go over the cover letter?
Sure, you can go over the cover letter, the resolution, I know that you communicated with me, you had a four or five-minute presentation, you take all the time that you need.
So we submitted a cover letter and a draft resolution to the select board, and that is part of the package for today's meeting. I can go over that information again, or we can just present what we wanted to say supplemental to that.
I think for the folks at home that are watching that may not have seen the packet, it'd be a good idea to go through the draft.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to read it? Or should I just read? So with the first part that I'm about to read, unfortunately, is going to be a little bit long, but that's the cover letter that we submitted to the select board. Dear Chair and Vice Chair, as residents of Exeter, we're writing to you to share a draft resolution calling on President Joe Biden and our federal representative delegation to facilitate an immediate and enduring ceasefire between Israel and Palestine, to facilitate the provision of life-saving humanitarian aid in Gaza, to call for the release of all hostages and all people unjustly held in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank, to consider the economic costs of this ongoing conflict on the residents of Exeter, and to work towards a political solution to the ongoing conflict. We understand that arguments can be made that non-binding resolutions are symbolic and may not impact U.S. foreign policies, as well that our town's select board should prioritize municipal affairs instead of international conflicts. However, as citizens of the United States, we have a moral obligation to inform our elected officials when we strongly disagree with their actions and when our federal taxes are being used to kill and injure noncombatants and children in direct disregard of the statutory provisions in effect under the Leahy Law, which the numbers are Section 620m of the Foreign Assistance Act of 1961, 22 USC 2378D, and Section 362 of Title X of the U.S. Code. As our local government representatives with access to higher-level government officials, we respectfully request that you hear our concerns and consider the resolution for discussion at the next select board meeting. Yours sincerely, Dr. Karishma Manzoor, Ms. Mercy Carbonell, Mr. Charles Fanning, Dr. Caitlin Martin Fox, Ms. Tanya Hibler, Dr. Alexander Koh, Dr. Khalid Mahdi, MX Charla Malamed, Dr. Michael Matsumaru, and Dr. Hina Muniruddin. Did you want me to now read the draft resolution?
Sure, please.
Does anyone else want to do it? Okay. Okay, to make it a little bigger.
Do you want a pen and drop in? Would that be helpful?
Oh, it's okay. Thank you. Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, in the year 2024, a resolution calling on the President of the United States of America, Joseph R. Biden, United States Senators Jean Shaheen and Maggie Hassan, and United States Congressman Chris Pappas, to facilitate immediate de-escalation and sustained bilateral ceasefire between Israel and Palestine, to facilitate the immediate entry of humanitarian aid assistance, including medicine, food, and water to Gaza at the scale required, to call for the release of all hostages and all people unjustly held in the region, including Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank, and to work with the international community toward long-term political solutions that could afford safety and dignity to all people in Israel and Palestine. To be resolved by the select board of the Town of Exeter as follows: Whereas, the Exeter Select Board recognizes that all human life is precious, and all people have a right to live with dignity, feel safe, and be respected, regardless of nationality, race, or religion. And, whereas, international humanitarian law requires that all parties to an armed conflict to protect children and noncombatants, and prevent the commission of grave violations against them, including killing and maiming, attacks on schools and hospitals. And, whereas, hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk of famine and death if a permanent ceasefire is not reached, and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And, whereas, to provide economic and military aid to Israel and humanitarian aid to Gaza and the West Bank in the year 2024 alone, over $1.2 million in federal taxes will come out of the citizens of the Town of Exeter alone, over $102 million will come out of the state of New Hampshire, and over $20 billion will come out of the United States of America, instead of using American tax revenues to fund local, state, and federal healthcare, housing, and educational needs. And now thereof be it resolved that the Exeter Select Board joins with representatives of other U.S. cities and towns in calling on our President and our federal representative delegation to facilitate an immediate and enduring ceasefire, the provision of life-saving humanitarian aid in Gaza, the release of all hostages and all people unjustly held, a political solution to the ongoing conflict. And be it further resolved that the Exeter Select Board asks the town clerk to forward copies of this resolution to the President of the United States, our federal representative delegation, the Governor of New Hampshire, and our state representatives.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now I start my speech? I'm taking up a lot of time, sorry about that. Good evening. Thank you to the Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the select board for giving us an opportunity to speak here today. Yesterday was Mother's Day, a day when we all celebrate the pure unconditional love that binds us, sorry, binds us to the woman who loved us even before she saw our face. It is the day we celebrate our mothers, regardless of whether we are Muslims, Christians, Jews, or of any other faith, or whether we are brown, black, white, or any other beautiful color of humanity. As we cherish our mothers, our children, and everyone else we love, we should take a moment to remember the love between the mothers and the children who have died or are suffering in the ongoing tragedy in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. We are not here today to discuss who owns the Holy Land that has caused so much unholy death and destruction. We are not here to discuss a 3,000-year-old religious text. We are not here to discuss the centuries-old horrific genocidal prejudice in Europe and its repercussions over the last 75 years in the Middle East. And we're not here to discuss whether warning people ahead of dropping bombs constitutes a higher moral ground. But we are here today as we believe in the sanctity of life, and we denounce all groups who are responsible for the killings, kidnappings, sexual violence, starvation, pain, suffering, and terrorizing in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. We say no to using starvation as a weapon of war that is a war crime. We say no to dropping any more bombs on Gaza, whether they're dumb bombs or laser-guided smart bombs. Regardless of such labels, all of these are weapons that cause mass death and indiscriminate destruction and severely violate human rights. Let me give you an example. Imagine that a military was targeting this town office, claiming that a militant was using this building and dropped an American-made 2,000-pound MK-84 bomb. The explosion will carve a crater 50 feet across and 30 feet deep. The lethal radius will be a quarter mile wide, killing all people as far away as Exeter Mills Apartments, Stillwell's Ice Cream Store, and the Academy's campus. The destruction will not stop there. The blast waves will be felt up to a half a mile away, rupturing lungs and tearing off limbs. Let us take a moment to think about the destructive power of such a weapon. Over 500 such 2,000-pound bombs have been dropped in Gaza since October. As many of you may be aware, an additional shipment of such bombs was recently halted by the Biden administration. Don't forget that this conflict, the continuing conflict, the weapon sales are making many people, politicians, lobbyists, media moguls, and the weapons manufacturers very, very rich. Since October 2023, Northrop Grumman stock price has increased 12%. General Dynamics stock price has increased 35%, and Raytheon stock price has increased Such special interest groups are labeling calls for a ceasefire as pro-Hamas and anti-Semitic. Calls against mass murder and calls against weapon sales are being labeled pro-Hamas and anti-Semitic. Such vile labels are being used to silence people. We're coming together today as we will not allow corrupt politicians and manipulative voices to tear us apart as billions of dollars of blood money are exchanging hands to make sure that the conflict in the Middle East continues. We stand here together to say no to giving power to the few hundred people who are enriching themselves from the sales of military weapons and bombs at the cost of terrorizing millions of people. Let us say no to any more violence and bloodshed, and come together to speak on behalf of our fellow human beings. We stand here today to support the peacemaking. We stand here today to support the peacemakers in Palestine, Israel, and the U.S., like Issa Amro's Nonviolent Resistance in the West Bank. We also support Masavot, made up of Israeli teenagers who are refusing to serve in the military and are facing imprisonment. The Parents Circle, an organization of over 600 Israeli and Palestinian families, all of whom have lost a family member to the ongoing conflict. And here in the United States, Jewish Voices for Peace and New Hampshire Peace Action, right here in our state. Many of these people are continuing to support peace despite being ostracized and receiving death threats. Therefore, please join us in solidarity to urge President Biden, Sandra Shaheen, Sandra Hassan, and Representative Pappas to support the following four clauses. One, we urge our elected officials to facilitate immediate de-escalation and enduring ceasefire to bring peace and prosperity to Israel and Palestine. Two, we urge our elected officials to facilitate the immediate entry of lifesaving humanitarian aid to Gaza. Three, we urge our elected officials to call for the release of all Israeli hostages and all Palestinian people being unjustly held in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. Four, we urge our elected officials to work towards a political solution to the ongoing These four requests are the essence of the resolution in front of us today. Join us as we say that all human life is precious, and all people have a right to life, liberty, and happiness, regardless of their nationality, race, or religion. Please join us as we begin to imagine together a movement for justice and peace, and please support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the board discusses, anybody and everybody that would like to comment is welcome to the podium if you so choose. You just state your name and your address for the record. Please.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Robert Azzi. When I moved here in 1988--
Sir, I'm sorry, can you just state your address for the record?
Oh, excuse me. Robert Azzi, 15 New Fields Road--
Thank you, sir.
--Exeter. When I and my family moved here to Exeter in 1988, we were the only Muslim family, I think, in town. I mean, we were so bereft of Muslim resources that I sent my daughter to a Unitarian Sunday school. And it was one of the best things I ever did because it brought us into the town. And it was at a time, in fact, when I brought some Bosnian students to escape the civil war in Bosnia in the '90s that Exeter families adopted these children and took them in. And it's a little hard to conceive today, but "I am Muslim" was the symbol of the Christmas parade that year, you know, the sort of grand marshals. And so I think, I want to speak not just to what's happening in Gaza and Palestine and in Israel, but why this matters to Exeter. I have found, aside from the fact that three businesses I do regular business with in Exeter and the surrounding area are run by Palestinians, that this is a community that's welcomed and has become part of a global network of people, both through the academy and through its businesses and its research facilities. And I don't think this is strictly a question of what's happening to those poor people in Gaza or in Israel, the hostages. It's what we show our children that we care about, and how we want to model our behavior as global citizens for other children and other people to be part of the world. It's very easy, I think, for those of us in our privilege to say, "Well, this really doesn't matter to us. This is a national problem." Well, it's not a national problem, especially for me. I've had three people die in Gaza that I know personally. I have friends in Israel. I have friends in settlements. I have friends throughout the Middle East. That's my heritage, and it's my background. But I know too that when I was guardian to children from Afghanistan and Bosnia and Pakistan and Palestine and Yemen and other parts of the Middle East, that they weren't welcome just at the academy, they were welcome in Exeter. They went to other schools, and they spoke about Ramadan, they spoke about our holidays, they spoke about things that we did. It's not a one-way street. We're not doing them a favor. We do each other favors because, as the Quran says, "We have made you tribes and people so that you may know each other." It's not just that we know the indigent and the poor and the targeted, we have to know everyone. So I say this matters to us because it gives us an opportunity to affirm our humanity and our understanding of what's happening in this world. And so I thank you for considering it. I thank you to all my friends here for showing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Erica Wilson. I live at 81 Front Street. I actually didn't plan on saying anything tonight, but I'm going to get really emotional. I have two little boys. I don't really know how I'm going to explain to them what we all did or didn't do in the future. You know, we live in a digital age. Everything's going to be recorded. Every, everything we said or turned a blind eye to is going to be recorded. I, I work across the street. I'm a psychiatrist. I have a master's in public health. And I'll tell you what this is doing to peoples, everyday people in our community. I mean, I do outpatient psychiatry, right? People come in and they pour out whatever is weighing on them. This is weighing on people. It's weighing on people that, you know, we, we feel really powerless in this situation. We all pay our taxes, we vote, you know? But we really don't have power over these big deals, these Raytheon deals, these, you know, GE deals. You know, people are making decisions on our behalf and making us complicit in something that really, you know, I don't know how we can disagree that murdering children is a bad thing. I don't see why peace should ever be disagreed with. And I think that really just coming out as a community and saying, like, "We don't agree with this. We don't, we don't like what's happening. We'd like to see peace in this area." You know, I feel like it's, it's a small thing that we can do as a community, and I feel like it will lighten the hearts of a lot of people in this community to know that we've sort of come together to say that. So yeah, I just, I just wanted to weigh in on my personal experience, hearing from people day in and day out, how this is affecting them. And I think maybe in October, November, December, it wasn't weighing as heavy as it is now. You know, now that we can open our phones, we can see footage that 20 years ago you never would have been privy to on the, you know, on the nightly news. But we're all seeing it, and I think we all have to sort of take a stand. And I really appreciate the group that brought this resolution. I wasn't a part of it, but I just thought I could, could weigh in and sort of let people know how it's affecting others at a more community level. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, I'll say something. I also am a therapist.
Can I just, we just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Charla. I live at 130 Water.
Thank you.
And I'm relatively new to the community. I came here last year and also have people coming into my office and, and seeing both in myself and in the people that are in my circles and the people I work with, how tied in mental health is to the larger politic, specifically when it's not something that we talk about and it becomes very similar to other things that we disavow when they're too hard to talk about. So I think at the very least, adopting this resolution, at the very least, will make this something that is not disavowable, doesn't become part of a shadow world that we can't talk about, which is how illness actually comes into being, which is how we become sick. So that's the first thing I want to say. The other thing that I would like to offer is that I, I'm a Jewish person. I have a Jewish background. I have a Holocaust history. I have family in Israel, people who I love, who have not been impacted directly by what's happening. And I, I am profoundly ashamed by what is being done in my name, in all Jewish people's names, and the conflation of Judaism with Israel that's happening right now is deeply shameful for me. So for me, making this something that is spoken and stated provides space for Jewish people to take a stand in a way that doesn't actually conflate the two. And that for me is a, a piece of the puzzle that's missing. So what I would like to do is create space for Jewish people to say no to what is happening and to say this is not going to happen in my name, and a ceasefire is the least we can do. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, go ahead. Come right up.
I'll just be very brief.
Good job.
My name's Ally Muckel. I live at 20 Chestnut Street in Exeter Mill. So I've been in Exeter now for four years, so I'm a fairly new resident, but I absolutely love every single thing about this town. And being downtown has been such a privilege to be able to be a real part of the community. And I think that Exeter Mill in and of itself is its own community within Exeter. My neighbors are of all ages, but many of them are older, and we've become friends. And that's been really special for me, coming here from Boston, which is a big city, to just feel like I'm part of it. So I guess I just wanted to share that perspective of one person who is, you know, out in the community, that I'm hearing a lot about this conflict and how much it's affecting people as well. So even outside of the therapist's office and conversations I'm having with neighbors, many of them in their 80s and their 90s, this is on their minds too, and they're not seeing it on TikTok, but they're reading about it and hearing about it and just absolutely appalled and upset. I have a weekly happy hour with the ladies in my building, and every week this comes up in conversation. This is just always on people's minds and in their hearts. And I know for me personally, it's definitely affecting me and my ability to work and just be productive because it's just so hard to do that because I don't know, it's intolerable to think about what is happening to people in Palestine. To me, it feels absolutely intolerable, and I know so many others who feel that way in Exeter. So I guess I wanted to share that from my view, it's a pretty universal sentiment here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? No one online with their hand up? Well, before we bring it back to the board, thank you all very much, first of all, for coming this evening. Thank you for reading the cover letter, the resolution, and, and your letter, which was very inspiring, particularly given what yesterday was. Thank you all for those that spoke out and expressed your feelings. You know, I think as we're here tonight as select board members, we're here as elected officials, but we're human beings too. And I think that we all feel to some degree pretty much what all of you have mentioned. And I want to thank you, sir, for your comments about how inclusive and welcoming Exeter is, and that, that means a lot to me. So if there are no other comments, I'd like to hear what the board has to say, and I think I'll start down here. Selectwoman Charter, if you have any comments or thoughts?
I thought I knew what I was going to say, and your testimony has, it's moved me greatly. I'm struggling with this resolution because it is, while on its face, it seems perfectly fine. Like, why wouldn't anyone be for all of these things that you're asking us to resolve and report out to our elected officials at the federal level? I do struggle with it because of our form of government. You know, we just did a couple of, earlier in our agenda, we did a couple of proclamations for things that were very easy to proclaim. Of course, we want to support our town employees, and this is much more difficult. And while I find everything in your resolution to be something that I can support personally as an elected official, our form of government is very specific that the, the highest body in the land of this town is the voters of this town. They're the legislative body. And something like this that has the potential for being something to be discussed should probably go to them. But another fault of our form of government is that that body only meets once a year during our town election, and that is not timely in this situation. So that's my struggle with this. And I was fairly resolved coming into this meeting that that's what I was going to pitch to all of you. But your testimony has moved me, and I think I need more time to think about this. So I unfortunately am not going to be able to give you an answer for me as an elected official tonight, and I apologize for that. But you have had an impact on me tonight, and especially those of you that talked about the, the impact of this on mental health. Mental health is something that's very important to me. I, I personally have struggled greatly to attain mental health. I've availed myself in mental health services throughout my adult life, and it's helped me greatly. And to hear that that is impacting folks in that process, that, that moves me greatly. So for tonight, I'm going to ask you to, to let me consider this further, and that's what I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Selectwoman Charter.
Yeah.
Selectwoman Blanger.
My heart goes out to everything that was said tonight. I've talked to a few of you personally. I am stuck on my role as a select board member. If you came to me on a personal level, one-on-one, and I'm not sitting in this room in this chair, I know personally what I would do or say about this, but as a select board member, it, this is difficult. I struggle, as Dan does, on, on many levels. We've thought about this for two weeks. It's very difficult to ask for more time. It's up to the board if they want to. You know, and once everyone speaks, if we want to consider tabling this till another meeting or not, but that's how I feel. I just, I personally just don't feel like this is a select board role. Our, our federal, our, our centers, the people that you mentioned, our congressmen, yes, those are the people. I think it's their role to reach out to, but unless we can get a citizen's petition and we have a vote on it, I just struggle without part of it too.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman, do you have any thoughts?
I do. I want to thank Dr. Manzoor for your very eloquent speech. It was, it was, it was moving and just very well said to explain without any, I don't want to say without any emotion, but without any, what's the word I want?
She kept her flow, I'm sure.
No, without any anger.
Yeah. Emotion.
Yeah, it was very, it was very eloquent. And I, and it reminds me that, and this is very different, being a continuous and, and right now escalate, you know, horror, but it reminds me that we as a select board have instituted Juneteenth as a town holiday. as a town holiday. As a select board, we have changed Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I believe the select board also was one of the first to recognize Martin Luther King Day instead of Freedom Day, or whatever it was called. And while those weren't written out or asked for by, well, they were asked for by residents, but we didn't have this kind of intimacy. That's what I find moving about this. And, you know, I have two children in college that were out on campus in their tents, and they explained to me why. It's what I heard tonight. I appreciate that you all feel inclusive here, that you feel included, and if you don't, please let us know. And the mental health discussion was also very appropriate in that, you know, this is making people think hard and not happy, not necessarily happy. So I would go along with the rest of the board, but I feel fine with this resolution and doing it. I know, I understand that as a board, you know, we're nonpartisan, but this is not a partisan issue to me. And because of our previous actions, I feel like that, yes, it's just a group of people that are sending a letter to our federal congression, senators and the congressman, but that happens almost every town meeting day. And I know this is not town meeting day, but there's always somebody with a petition asking us to send a letter to all of these people, and it happens. So to sum it up, I would just say, I really, I like the resolution and adopting it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan.
Thank you so much for being here and for sharing your hearts and feelings. It's really helpful to hear from a variety of constituents in our community. I, I mean, I also feel pretty pragmatic in our role as a select board and, you know, think about the impact of this and also, you know, really strongly consider our place as leaders in the state. And, you know, and I understand Nancy and Dan, what you're saying, and I totally do. I really, I mean, that's the piece of like, is it worth saying words when, you know, but I don't know that it's not worth it, you know? And so there's this piece for me that's like, what's happening is awful, what's happening is continuous, and if it, you know, I very firmly believe our role is to keep folks in our communities safe and whole, and I really love how you framed this as a peace resolution. That, for me, is a thing that can, you know, that it's not judgmental, it's not, it's not political in a divisive way, it's political in we are human way. And that feels like a really strong and powerful statement to make. And so I would also, you know, out of consideration for, you know, somebody who's asked for more time, I would, you know, I am not needing to act on this tonight if members need more time, but also, you know, really appreciate the care and thought that you've put into this, because it's, you know, it's, the world is really hard to exist in right now.
Thank you. What kind of time do we think we need to consider this, further work through concerns?
Our next meeting is
May 28.
A week from tomorrow, two weeks from tomorrow.
As a reminder, I will not be here that week.
We'd still have a quorum, and you've made
Yeah, that's right. So, yes, don't let that, just saying.
I think the sooner the better.
Well, I mean, you're free to make a motion, Selectwoman Gilman.
I am. I know, I'm trying to, trying to word it in my mind. Mr. Chair, I move that we discuss the resolution by the town of Exeter regarding the calling on the president to have an immediate de-escalation and sustained ceasefire between Israel and Can we?
Did you want to discuss this before we make a motion?
I was trying to make the motion.
I understand that, but I'm just
Yeah, okay. No, I, no.
I'm not clear on what
Okay, I'm going to withdraw all the stuff I said.
I'd like you to make a motion if you'd like, but I'm just trying to, I was trying to
Well, let's see. Yeah, let's see if there's a day we can all be here. It can be in the morning or evening. I'm free every day but Thursday. What are you trying to do, Julie?
See if we can get together next week to resolve the resolution.
I have a few more thoughts, when you have a second.
Do you want to pause on your motion for a moment?
Yes.
Mr. Charter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this, something similar has been taken up in a couple other communities. One was Portsmouth, the other was Durham. I think we're the third community to take this up. The difference between Exeter and those other two communities is they are not SB2 towns, they are not, they don't do town meeting. Or Durham may do town meeting, but only for budget, if I remember correctly. But they have a town council that is charged with doing things like this. Portsmouth, of course, has a city council, they don't even have town meeting, and they are the body to bring something like this to. And so I do feel strongly, and in some history here, I did bring a citizen's petition to the voters of this town back in sometime in the mid-teens, 2014, 2015, 2016, as a sitting select person, asking if the voters of the town would be interested in forming a charter commission to look at our form of government, which is extremely unwieldy. It is wonderful in that it allows all citizens of the town to participate in decision-making. It is extremely unwieldy, and that only happens once a year, and I often am frustrated by that. But the town voted very clearly not to form a charter commission, to even look at other forms of government, and I took that as an affirmation of our current system. And so I take our current system very seriously, having been rejected by the voters in studying what we were doing and looking at there might being a better way. So given that personal history with the voters of this town, I am regretfully going to have to say that I would have to vote no to any motion to send this resolution on to our federal officials. And I, and regretfully is definitely the word in my mind. But I thank you all for putting this in front of us and for making us consider it and for making me make a choice. This is how this particular system of government that we have is supposed to work. You are supposed to come here and talk to us and make us consider difficult things that are happening in the world. And I apologize to all of you that I cannot vote yes on that.
Thank you, Mr. Charter.
All right, I'm not going to change.
His sentiment, 100%, how I feel or what I would do in another situation is different. I would have to, my regret is that it's not close to march, and they could put a citizen's petition together. I just feel that's our responsibility as we sit in these seats. And it's not, I'm not happy having to say that, but that's my role, and I have to take that seriously, so.
There is a hand, and, I mean, I know we're in the, we're discussing, so it's at the board level, but, okay.
Before any motions are made, if a motion's going to be made, and before I speak, once we close public comment, that's why I kept asking folks if they, if anybody else wanted to speak, and once the board starts deliberating, it's supposed to stay at the board. We do not have a motion on the table, though, so if the board would indulge me, sir, I'd like to hear what you have to say. So if you could come up to the mic again. This is a unique situation, so we're going to
I totally understand the rationality of all that you're saying, and the position I've found myself in since October 7th is perhaps irrational to other people. So I'm not going to argue with, you know, this isn't a time for arguing with people. I want to know, what would it take to call a special town meeting?
That's a great question.
That's a good question.
If we're willing to do the work, is there a mechanism for calling a special meeting?
So to call a special town meeting, which we just did last July over the siphon issue that you heard earlier, first you have to go to court, and you have to petition the judge to allow the special town meeting to be scheduled. That's the cliff no version. Mr. Dean, what are the other particulars, but I know that's the first step.
Then there's several posting requirements, et cetera, but the core of it is that the court would have to deem an emergency that could be fulfilled by a special town meeting.
So it's doable, of course.
So because what's happening in Gaza is exigent circumstances, I mean, it's not something we can put off to the next town meeting. That gives it some urgency. My other question is, does it require your consent to do a special town meeting?
That I don't know the answer to. Mr. Dean?
Yes, it would.
Be our request.
And given the state, is this something that you might be tempted to support?
I'm going to answer your question when I come back to what I wanted to say. I'm going to answer that, but I also want to give you an opportunity, if you have anything else that you want to ask.
Okay, no, that's
I understand what you're
My only sense is that I think what we feel and what you feel is truly reflected in the hearts of many people who live in Exeter. And I think they're calling upon you as well as upon us to express some solidarity with the people that are under stress. And, what's the expression? I yield the floor.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I am going to answer your question, but I'm going to do it in a roundabout I share everything that my colleagues have said this evening. I've had an opportunity to even speak with several of you over the last couple of weeks And this is tough, because, you know, as I said when we first started, we're all human beings, and it's hit everybody. But as local elected officials, we also have a job to do, and when we walk through the door, what we're supposed to do, and I think what this board currently does very, very well, is we separate who we are, and when we're here, we're representing the town. And that can often be very, very difficult. It can be very difficult with town-related issues when we have friends and neighbors who come up to the podium because they're upset with something that's happening in their neighborhood, and we have to say no, because we have to do what's best for the town. And that's difficult all in of itself when it's a town-related issue, you know, over infrastructure needs, the things that we were elected to address. But this is hard, because we are limited in what we can do. But sometimes symbolism is important. So back to your question about the special town meeting, yes, it can be done if the judge has petitioned, if they go through the formal legal proceedings, and yes, it does have to be the request of the board. But my, the consensus I'm getting is that we just need another week or two to kind of think about this, because it is hard. And I, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but I, and I don't make promises that I can't keep. I'm promising you that I'm not pushing this ahead to avoid something very difficult. I'm asking for two more weeks for myself, because I really need to think long and hard about something that's really so important. And, you know, if we can come back here on the 28th and have, you know, further discussion, if at that point you're not satisfied with what we decide to do, then you can petition us to consider a special town meeting. But I would, with all respect, ask that we have that period of time, just so that we can, because it's easy to study our packet over the weekend. And, you know, I don't think any of us really ever come in here knowing how we're going to vote on something, because, you know, we have the information that's in our packet, but we have experts that come and speak about, you know, public safety complexes and siphons. And I know way more about sewer siphons over the last year and a half than I ever thought I would know. But we don't know how we're going to vote, and you said it perfectly, you know, you can have an idea of what you're thinking, but when you hear personal testimony from folks, whether it be about their neighborhood or something far more serious like this, you have to pause, because you're considering new things. So I believe the consensus is to take this back up on May 28th. You're all welcome back to public meeting, we'd love to see you. And I appreciate the fact that you all came out, but I appreciate further your patience with us this evening. And for those that I have spoken to over the last couple of weeks, I sincerely, sincerely appreciate the respect of the board, the civility in which you've presented yourself, and trying to understand our form of government. And more times than not, you know, we have folks that come in here and they want what they want, and they pound their fists, and it's who can yell the loudest, but what I've taken from this is, and what I appreciate so much, is you putting forth your message, but also asking, how does this work? What does the select board do, and how do you do it? And wanting to understand how we can do this together, and that means so much to me, and I thank you for that. So we'll be back on the 28th. We're meeting on a Tuesday because of the holiday on Monday, but we will have that on the agenda, and hopefully we'll see you. And thank you all for sharing your thoughts tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any final?
Do we have to motion a table, or no? We're okay with just putting it back on the agenda again? We don't have to table?
I don't think we need
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're dotting our i's.
Mr. Dean, do you feel a motion is in order, or could we just continue this? I think continue it is the right word.
We'll just continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, right. Anything else? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a DES grant for household hazardous waste collection. Mr. Dean, you want to speak to this?
Yes, so this is our annual household hazardous waste collection Yes. So this is our annual household hazardous waste collection grant. We get this from DES that helps subsidize our collection day. And this year, they're proposing that they grant the town $8,331 to go against costs associated with our collection day. And we have many different towns that participate in our collection day, as pointed out in the memo.
It's growing every year.
Yep.
Yes. Popular event.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for hazardous household waste collection in the amount of $8,331 and to further authorize the town manager or his designate to sign the associated grant agreement documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And I believe we had three more committee members, Mr. Dean, that wanted to be reappointed.
These are three individuals that were not on the list at the last meeting.
And much like the last time, are these all three-year terms?
Three-year terms, yes.
Three-year terms. Okay. I would entertain.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Would you want me to make the motion on Ryan? The second?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to reappoint Laura Montagno to the zoning board of adjustment for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Selectman Chartran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the courtesy. I've been so impressed serving with Ryan over the last year. And I know he's had some time commitment issues that he struggled with, but it makes me so happy to, to make a motion to nominate him to another term. He works at Revision Energy. He brings a lot of expertise to the work of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, but he's just passionate about the issues. And again, makes me very pleased to move to appoint Ryan Jean to another three-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Selectman Chartran, I will tell you a quick story about Ryan. When I was a select board rep to the Sustainability Committee for the last couple of years, it was always the committee, at the time, Mr. Sharples and then Kristin Murphy and me. And then there was always one other person who came to every meeting and sat there by himself. And after about a year, this is after we had an open seat, I went up after the meeting and I said, and he told me who he was, and I said, you're coming to all the meetings to fill out the application. And fortunately, he did. And I agree with you. He's been a great, great asset.
Great job of recruitment there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
We, we all do. I, nobody recruits better than Selectwoman Belanger, though, I have to say, particularly for budget.
I try.
Selectwoman Corson was pretty good.
We have one more. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Rachel Ladeau to the REC Advisory Board for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And Madam Clerk?
So all for your 2027, right?
Yes. Madam Clerk, I will turn it over to you.
Okay.
I think we have some, I have some questions about, once we get past.
What is this thing?
I don't have that.
The Andy thing? It was after, it was after Gaza. What is that? I have it.
The Certificate of Authority? Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, for.
For what?
For this is the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Grant.
Okay. It's part of that. Thank you. I was even confused on what that was part of.
I thought you say it was attached to this.
What the heck? Yeah.
What the heck is this? All right. So we have a long list of different exemptions.
George did the quick ones first, or?
Oh, yeah. Let me do the quick ones first. I don't know. Get my pages all mixed up. Mr. Chair, I move to accept a yield tax from map 30, lot 3, and map 43, lot 2, in the amount of $435.28 for tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I move to, to accept a yield tax from map 33, lot 26, unit 1, in the amount of $944.83 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I move to deny a charitable exemption for map 83, lot, map 18, lot 3, for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And this is a big one. What do I do? What am I saying here? To collect the, the tax warrant?
Approve the property tax warrant for the first half of 2024.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the first tax warrant for 2024 in the amount of $31,403,010.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. These are all, the next things are all tax exemptions. Hold on a second. I want to see how it's done.
Yeah, there you go.
So am I giving the numbers of the?
Say map, map and lot unit?
I know, but the hospital exemption has numbers, but the others don't?
That's because the hospital has various exemptions and the others are 100% exemptions.
Okay.
The percentages are different for the hospital.
Oh, I see.
Based on building and use.
Okay. So, all right. So for this first page, I'm gonna read the map and lot numbers. They're all different percentages and numbers. So we're gonna have to go through them all. I'm moving for tax exemption for map 65, lot 128, the amount of $36,700, 100% exempted.
So moved. Second, excuse me. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve a tax exemption for map.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
Is there any way you can group the map and lot unit? And then just put the different, or is that gonna?
The percentages?
Is that gonna, to see how these are all?
Yeah, I know. They're all.
I don't know if that'll make it easier for you.
Well, it'll make it easier for me, but I don't know if it'll make it easier for the, for the record.
I'm sorry. Good. Go.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I have to do them all. So, so have I done two of them?
You just did the first one. I interrupted you on the second.
Okay. So I move to approve a tax exemption for map 65, lot 129, in the amount of $3,47,400, which represents 29.7% of the.
Second.
calculation.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? We will have to, we will have to go up and do the second one. That was the third one. Am I correct, Joanna?
Yeah, you are correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So we're gonna go back up to number two. The one for 7 million.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's the same map and lot unit.
Yeah, okay. Move to approve a tax exemption for map 65, lot 29, in the amount of $7,196, $96,500, 70.3% exempted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a correction. It's, it's lot 129 and it's unit 1.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, one of these, right.
So there's a revised motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve a tax exemption in the amount of, for map 65, lot 130, the amount of $10,380,000, which is 86.4% of taxable rate.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve tax abatement for map 65, lot 130, in the amount of $10 million. I just said that one. Sorry. Tax map 65, lot 130, unit 1, in the amount of $1,628,000, which is 13.6% of tax value.
Second.
So, Mr. Chair, can I interrupt just for a minute? So that is the taxable amount. So I don't think, if you're reading exemptions, I think what you want to do is read the exemption as Julie did for map 65, lot 130, in the amount of $10,380,000. That's the exemption amount. So you'd read the exemption amount, but the taxable amount would just be the leftover amount that is taxed. So it's not an exemption per se. So I think you only have to read the, the rows that say exempt on them with the percentage, with the percentage next to the word exempt.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
There is a motion in a second. Any discussion?
That's not a taxable one, so.
Okay.
It's moot.
Ah, okay.
So I think you're at.
So I withdraw my second.
I think there were two seconds.
And you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
65, 131. Is your next one?
Yes. I move to exempt lot, map 67. Sorry, I'm having such a difficult time. Map 65, lot 130, the amount of $1,628,000, which is 13.6.
That's the taxable one. So you want to jump down to the next one?
No, it's, it's map 65, lot 131.
131, yeah.
And it's for $41,962,200, which is 100%.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I think I get it right now. I'm sorry. Too many lines. Okay. So I move to approve a tax exemption for map 65, lot 131, in the amount of $41,962,200.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to exempt map 65, lot 131, unit 3, in the amount of $1,216,100.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve a tax exemption for map 65, lot 131, unit 4, in the amount of $10 million.
That's a tax, that's not an exemption. Do we still have to read that one, Mr. Dean?
You do not.
Okay, so we'll go down to.
I'm gonna cross these things out.
7147.
7147 taxable. Okay.
The exempt one, the $0.
I haven't seen it.
I move to approve a tax exemption for map 71, lot 47.
Unit 1.
Unit 1, in the amount of $0.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then Julie, the 7148E.
Okay.
Next to last one.
I move to approve an exemption for map 71, lot 48, unit E, the amount of $64,000.
Second. $64,000, which is a 16.9%. There was a motion, Mr. Chartran, second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry.
It's hard to read these.
All right. Then we have, just to re- verify that the properties on these lists are still exempt because of their kind of service. So for a tax exemption for a religious exemption type, I'm gonna just read all the units. And if you object, one.
Fair enough.
Map 83, lot 60, map 91, lot 32, unit E, map 72, lot 222, map 72, lot 222E, map 73, lot 143, map 29, lot 26, map 29, lot 21, unit E, map 95, lot 61, map 72, lot 166, map 91, lot 35, map 72, lot 165, map 73, lot 5, and map 73, lot 300, and map 73, unit, or lot 299.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Following, we're approving a continuing exemption type for map 63, lot 8, map 60, map 35, lot 4, map 80, lot 18, map 80, lot 18, unit E, map 87, lot 23, I'm sorry, map 97, lot 23, map 97, lot 23, unit E, map 98, lot 37, map 98, lot 37, unit E, map 86, lot 8, unit 1, map 86, lot 8, unit 2, map 87, lot 36, unit E, map 65, lot 146, map 73, lot 292, map 72, lot 206, map 72, lot 215, map 82, lot 13, and map 72, lot 9.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the continuing exemption type for educational, for educational exemption, sorry. Map 71, lot 119, map 71, 119, 1E, sorry, unit 1E. Map 62, lot 112, map 108, lot 1, map 64, lot 41, unit E, map 64, lot 42, map 64, lot 43, map 64, lot 46, map 71, lot 119, unit E, map 72, lot 169, unit E, map 72, lot 204, unit 1E, map 74, lot 208, unit E. Thank you. Map 72, lot 209, unit E. Did I get that one right?
Yes.
All right. Map 83, lot 1, unit E, and map 83, lot 87.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for bearing with me.
Yes.
That was a lot.
It was a lot.
It was a tough one. Thank you. We have one approval this evening from Bill Rosson, Principal at PEA. The graduation is scheduled for Sunday, June 2nd at 10:30. And was it a rain date?
There's an alternate.
Yeah, I'm looking for that date.
No, the, the alternate is not the date. It's the place.
You're right. You're right. Okay. So as they've proposed in the past, they would like to, PEA would like to stop traffic on Front Street between Tan Lane and Elm Street and on Tan Lane itself between 9:30 a.m. and 1 p.m. And as Mr. Chartran corrected me, in case of rain, they will hold the graduation in the Thompson Field House and therefore require permission to close off Court Street instead of Front Street for those times. The Academy will make arrangements and pay the cost of police and temporary barricades.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's hope for good weather for them. Mr. Dean, the town manager's report, please.
Okay. So I held the weekly operations meeting on May 3rd. That was Friday of last week. And I was also able to attend for part of the meeting, the Housing Advisory Committee meeting, at the town offices on, on Friday. meeting, at the town offices on Friday. Also, the DPW bi-weekly meeting that we have with the DPW Director was held on May 7th. We are in the final phases of hiring a welfare human services administrator, so happy to report on that, and I know that was a goal that was set at the Select Board Goal Setting Session, so we're grateful to see that coming to fruition. Just a reminder, the Memorial Day Parade is almost upon us, and I did get a request if anyone knows an owner of an antique car that would be able to be provided for the event. We're still looking for one, so just wanted to put that out there. The solar array is under construction at the landfill, at the transfer station, the old landfill on the cap, and Dave Sharple's was out there today having a field meeting. There were a couple of logistical issues that we're working with as far as the cap goes, some water, some water-related issues, but that should be a maintenance issue that we are looking to take care of, so I'll report back to the board on that when we have a resolution on that. The auditors are continuing to work on their fieldwork. That's Plod's and Sanderson, our new town auditors, that we just enlisted for that. I participated pickpocket dam, so doing some outreach to our neighboring town. The tax warrant for 2024 is here, as we just found out, the bills are due July 1st. We also met with representatives of the Sportsman's Club last week. The DES has reached out to the town and asked us to do more on, prepare to do more on site characterization there, so the Sportsman's Club is obviously on the site with a long-term lease, so we wanted to make a connection there, and we did that. And then our ladder truck in the fire department was out of service for a bit with an alternative problem, but happy to report it is back in service now. And that was my report, unless there are questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dean? Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger, can we start with you?
Sure. I will start with following up on some questions that came from our last meeting. I reached out to Greg Beeson, and he had watched our meeting, our Select Board meeting, and it was during the single-use plastic discussion. So every year the kids get a new water bottle, they do order extra for anyone to purchase at the concession stand. He said to date no one has asked to purchase them, but they have them just in case. He also responded on Nico's question about moving the soda fountain, and he wrote, "Not really soda," to Tenhampton Road, and it would be difficult at those units, are plumbed specifically for those locations. And he also followed up with, if a camper forgets their water bottle, they can purchase an aluminum water bottle, in which they can refill it multiple times. If a child does not have money on them, we have a little slip that we give to the parents at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
So there's the follow-up. Recreation Advisory Board was on May 1st, and a lot of the things are out of date now, so I'm just going to hit some highlights if that's okay.
Please.
And they cover an awful lot, and being new to that board, I'm going to have to learn how to summarize better than I do, so bear with me. Merrill is their painting robot, and Merrill is hard at work. I know. They're going to have a naming contest for when the mowers come out, the electricity and stuff is being laid, the conduit and things, so that's coming up. So the kids get to name the new mowing robots, that's going to be fun. Merrill, the line robot, does not have sensors, so people, please stay out of their way. Let's see. I know, but that's why I'm putting it out there, so no one says they weren't told. Land Water Conservation Fund for the playground, for Planet Playground to be redone. Paperwork was due in a couple weeks, so it's going to be due any day now, sorry, this is 13 days old. There's that update on that. Let me just bear with me. And see, my tennis court repair is out of date, but because they posted today that the upper tennis courts will be closed for the next few days to crack repairs, and they'll post when they're open, there kept being a delay with all the rain. The rest is, we'll be hearing about this at budget, the cracks and the costs, and at some point the cracks don't work, filling the cracks, so sure we'll be getting that for budget probably this fall. Neptune Radio update, Mr. Tovey said that they've purchased three out of the four licenses, again, please keep in mind this was 13 days ago, and they were having a meeting to go over sponsorship, sales strategies, but thank you, Pro Oil, they were the first one to sign up, so that's a local company and people in the task board. Tenhampton Road, where am I on that? Mutual agreed to part ways with JSA, and they're working with the Town Manager for design with the Construction Manager, so that's coming up, right, Russ?
Yes.
Okay. And, I don't know how much you want me to get, the huge, huge, exciting increases on the kids signing up for events. Pickleball's up 22%, that's not children, obviously, that's adults. It's 295 this year. Tennis is only 18, but they stress that that was a late getting out to open the registration, so that number is not going to be the last number. But youth sports, they're up 34.7% overall on signups, so that's pretty exciting. Lacrosse is up 106%. Track signups up 76. Field hockey went down a little bit. Soccer, 16%, T-ball, 37%. Last year there were 392 kids in spring sports, and this year there are already 528. So we're really recovering finally from the COVID, and that's why I'm excited. It's post-COVID now, we're really starting to see those results. So those are my high points, how's that? Housing Advisory Committee, we had that Friday morning, and Ryan Pope, the Housing Navigator for Dover, came and talked to us, and it was a really good conversation. Some of the hangups that the Housing Advisory has had, some of the tougher discussions was with workforce housing, the qualifications, the oversight of that, and how to, how we might approach that, because that would be a cost, who would bear it? Dover does not do oversight, once you qualify, they don't, they just take people's word for it that they remain qualified. So that was, that was the first time we had heard that as an option. They, we talked about parking and things like that, too, and they have their parking garage, and they feel strongly about their meter parking, that the higher costs are in their downtown area, and it reduces as you go out. There's some private parking agreements that we discussed, but, and then Nick Taylor from Seacoast Workforce Housing gave us a legislative update on housing, and everything has pretty much not passed or failed at one level or another, except the ADUs. There's still, I think, one bill pending on ADUs. Yeah. So I attended only the half of the conference for zoning and planning Saturday afternoon, because I went to the OI Festival in the morning, and thank you to everyone who put that on and participated, that was wonderful. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Yes, I'm not going to top Ms. Belanger with that one. Went to an Energy Committee meeting for the first time in a long time, because we have them on Wednesdays when I'm in committee at the State House, but we talked about the window fitters program that I've been using the wrong words for all this time, but we're going to set, we're looking for volunteers, and it will be an organized thing where we have, right now we have the head level at the company, the window fitters company, and then we have three people on the Energy Committee that are divided up into, finding volunteers to measure windows, get the, coordinate the materials, and then do the fabrication onsite. And by onsite, I mean at the Town Hall. So that'll be happening, the building of these units, they're like storm windows, only they fit on the inside of your windows. First 10, I think we're, I think we're making enough for 100 windows, and the first 10 are free, or first 10 people are free. I'll have to find that out for next month. And then there was a discussion about electric vehicle charging stations, I guess the Rocking and Planning Commission is trying to plan out where to, what towns to ask for, and where we can make a move towards putting them in, and Exeter's qualified for two double charging stations, so four cars at one time, so that would be four spaces, and so there was a discussion about where would be a good space. And one space that came up as semi-popular, I guess, was the lot at the old Parks and Rec Building, and where the senior center is.
Yes.
And since we haven't talked about that, and I was like, yeah, it sounds good, but wait. And a couple other spots, you know, over by the Town Hall, you know, the usuals, and still haven't figured it out, but we have some time. And I missed, no, I was going to go to the Heritage Commission meeting, but it was canceled, and this is the first time I've been able to go since they changed the time from night to day. So that is unfortunate, and I knew exactly what was going to happen when they changed the time. And then I think Selectwoman Belanger and I both did a Saturday business.
Planning, zoning.
Business Industry Alliance Office of Planning and Development, zoning, teaching lessons. I went on the historic track, it was twice as good as last year when I was on the panel. I don't know what that means, but it was very good, and I noticed that a couple of members from the Heritage Commission and the HDC were also on the track, so that's encouraging. That's it.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Cohen.
I have nothing.
Okay. Selectwoman Chartren.
I attended a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, the 30th of April, and it was a great meeting, we talked about pushing forward the composting initiative out at the transfer station. There were other items on the agenda, but given the hour, I will defer.
Okay. I already talked about the Tree Committee in addition to celebrating the recognition by Tree City USA. They are identifying places to plant the trees now that they've got the budget, and they've done a very good job of identifying, and they're going to, they're going to plant the number of trees that we've budgeted for, and they'd like to come back before the board sometime in August to celebrate their success, so I told them we would put that on the agenda. River Advisory Committee met last Thursday, the final feasibility study was presented by Mr. Velasquez and VHB. The River Advisory Committee had a majority vote to recommend to the Select Board removal of the dam, and I believe that we'll be discussing that in our next meeting. I had the honor and privilege, along with Selectwoman Belanger and Selectwoman Gilman, of attending the Pocket Park dedication two Saturdays ago. It was incredibly well-attended. The weather was perfect. And, Mr. Dean, I'm sorry you were there as well. And just a beautiful, beautiful ceremony, so thank Renee for inviting us. And it looks good there.
The people who attended, the people who came, it was just inspiring.
Looks very good there.
Quick question, Mr. Chair, on the pickpocket dam, any word on when we're going to hear about the grant?
So it, my recollection from the meeting is that by July of this year, but it may be earlier, but we don't have a definite date.
July at the latest.
At the latest, is my understanding correct?
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence very quickly, we already addressed the requests that came in from public comment. We have a correspondence from the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, excuse me, celebrating partial victory. The Senate Committee.
We're working our way towards getting that metered customers, people with solar panels, towards being actually, to be put onto the system, right now they can't be because Unitil doesn't tell us, and average sources even worse.
Right.
So this bill was to get the utilities to provide the information that we're asking for, and they turned it into a study committee, the Senate turned it into a study committee, which is better than having it just be lost at all, and I'd like to thank Senate President Bradley for his work in getting it at least that far.
Thank you. We have correspondence from General Counsel and Senior Counsel at Synagro Epic regarding the EPA designation of PFAS as hazardous substance. We have our legislative bulletin from the NHMA, and a letter of thanks from St. Vincent de Paul for the Town of Exeter's continued support, and I believe that is it. Okay, looking at the board calendar.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
There's a few things that I really want to point out. First, I want to thank Phillips Exeter Academy, they did a great job with painting at the pool, and I really should have mentioned that, we've had some volunteers, and that's one of two, I can't remember the second one off the top of my head, but I will get it at our next meeting. I do want to thank Phillips Exeter, they even brought their own food.
Wow.
Yes, they had their own, they had it catered, and if anybody goes to the Parks and Rec Pool and takes a look, they did it.
Well, it looks wonderful.
It really did.
Thank you for bringing that up. Reviewing the board calendar, I, we'd gone up through July 8th previously, I've added some possibilities for the rest of the summer, and obviously if there are conflicts, we can try to work around that. And, Mr. Dean, I do know you and I are going to have to talk about the end of August, early September with the...
All right, August.
5th. August 19th. That follows the two-week.
Okay, August.
Onwards at some point.
Finishing this first?
Oh, sorry. You know me, I keep doing that to you.
I know it. All right, so everyone get those dates?
Yeah.
All right. And again, the August, Mr. Dean, you and I have to talk about August and September, because we run into this every year with the Labor Day, and I believe we have an election too.
Yes.
That Tuesday. Primary?
Believe so.
Okay. So we can, we can work that one out.
The 10th, yeah.
And as Selectwoman Belanger indicated, we will try to plan a all-boards meeting in June. Date TBD. Okay. Any other issues? Nope, okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, good night.